Yucca District, Councilmember Ray Malner of the Swarro District, Councilmember Lauren Tomachoff of the Choya District, and Councilmember Bart Turner of the Beryl District. Thank you for joining our Glendale City Council meeting.
Okay, welcome to Glendale City Council Voting Meeting of June 14th, 2022. This meeting is called to order. Roll call is not going to be necessary if you -- I don't know where our clerk went. There she is. If you'll take note, everyone is present and accounted for. Ladies and gentlemen in the audience, the next two items on our agenda are a little bit different than our normal meeting. Today happens to be Flag Day, if you haven't noticed by my tie. The United States Flag Day basically is a day honoring the adoption of the American Flag of the Second Continental Congress on June 14th, 1777. Now, in honor of the Flag Day, we have some special guests with us this evening to deliver our invocation and also to present the colors. The invocation is going to be presented by Harold May. He's the chaplain at the VFW Post 1433 here in Glendale and a retired Navy gentleman. Also in the back of the room, to my far left, you'll notice several Civil Air Patrol cadets. They are from the Glendale Composite Squadron 388, which I actually used to belong to several years ago when it was Squadron 308. And I asked if Civil Air Patrol would present colors. And then, at the same time, we really do want to honor our veterans and what the American Flag means to all of us. So I would ask if it's appropriate, if you're a man and you're wearing a hat, if it's appropriate, remove it. If it's appropriate, keep it on so you know which is right for you. And if everyone will please stand with us, sir, if you'd come up. And then, we'll go ahead. If everyone had to stand, we'll have the prayer, and then immediately following, we will have a presentation of our colors and our Pledge of Allegiance. Go ahead, sir.
If everybody would bow their heads, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening, blessed for this day in our history as the United States, that we were bestowed upon this honor to honor our flying colors, the United States' flag. I ask that you watch over these proceedings and show the guidance and wisdom that's required to help these things come that are meant to be. And we pray that everything goes well for all members here, both council and audience personnel. Ask that you bless the honor guard that's presenting the colors today for the Pledge of Allegiance and through these things that we ask your blessed guidance and assurance. Amen.
Thank you very much. Glendale Composite Squadron 388, if you'd present the colors, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, let's get into business. Next on the agenda is the consideration of the meeting minutes of May 24, 2022, voting meeting. Councilmembers, do you have any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the May 24, 2022 voting meeting minutes?
Yes, Mayor, I move the approval of the minutes. Ask the minute for the May 24, 2022 meeting.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Hughes, second from Councilmember Tomachoff. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's your ayes, have it, do have it, that motion carries. Moving on to proclamations. We do have a proclamation to recognize June as Parks and Recreation Month. Here to accept the proclamation are representatives from our Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. I'll announce your name, and then I'm going to go ahead and come down to the podium, and then you can join me if you would. We have Commissioner Helena Johnson Bodine. We have Commissioner Kathleen Mobby. And we have Commissioner Kathleen Rowe. Also, several members of our Parks Recreation Staff are here as well, and they're led by Director Jim Burke. So, if all of you would come up behind me at the podium, and we'll do the proclamation. Okay, so, who's going to be receiving this? You are. So why don't you stand next to me? Okay. Proclamation reads, "Whereas Glendale's parks, natural areas, playgrounds, sports fields, recreational programs, and community centers make Glendale an attractive and desirable place to live, work, play, and visit while contributing to its ongoing economic vitality; and whereas public parks and recreation systems are dedicated to enhancing the quality of life for its residents and communities around the world through recreation programming, leisure activities, and conservation efforts; and whereas parks and recreation experiences develop community lifelines and create continuous experiences for every member in our community; and whereas the City of Glendale Parks and Recreation Divisions are naturally accredited with over 2,100 acres of park acreage; and whereas July kicks off the summer season and has therefore been designated as Parks and Recreation Month by the National Recreation and Park Association, also the U.S. House of Representatives. Now therefore, I, Jerry P., wires Mayor of the City of Glendale, Arizona, on behalf of our city council, do hereby proclaim July 2022 as Parks and Recreation Month, and the City of Glendale, Arizona, encourage all citizens to support and utilize the Parks Recreation Program and special events in our community." That was signed by our Chief Clerk and myself, and I'll give that to you, sir. And before I give you the microphone, a lot of the young folks standing behind me, lifeguards, they were the ones that terrorized me when I was young.
No running.
No running, yeah. So I asked one of them if they'd blow the whistle, and so I don't think they wanted to do that. Mr. Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. We really appreciate this proclamation, and it's a pleasure to be here and represent the professionals that do this work every day. We have people here from parks maintenance, from recreation programs, young lifeguards, as you mentioned. The men and women who do this work are very proud to represent Glendale and provide services to the community. We have volunteers from our commission. Thank you very much for coming. You dedicate your time and your energy. And finally, to the mayor and council and the city management team, thank you for all your support. Appreciate it.
I dare you. I dare you.
Oh, you don't want to dare me. Everybody's here.
Thank you so much. Get your pictures. Good? It's funny, they never hesitated on blowing the whistle at me when I was in the -- at the -- okay. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda. We will move to our consent agenda, items three through 20. Items on the consent agenda are routine nature, but they've been previously studied by this council at a workshop session. Now, they are intended to be acted upon in one motion by this council. It's my understanding that Councilmember Tomachoff would like to have number 11 and number 12 discussed, is that correct, before the vote? I'm sorry?
Just to have the presentation.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, so if we could do items number 11 and 12 first, and then we'll just take a vote on everything.
Mayor, members of the council here to provide staff report is our Director of Water Services, Mr. Craig John.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, mayor and council. Item 11 here, let me get to it here. The professional service agreement before council this evening is with Hazen and Sawyer for engineering services for the Abrazo Arrowhead Hospital and well and the Sierra Verde Park Well, and has an additional term of two years with an option to renew for additional two years, for a total compensation of $1,888,433 over the entire term of the agreement. This agreement is for the construction contract administration of the two wells and will be completed in two phases. The first phase, GMP-1, will include pre-construction services, drilling of the wells, early procurement of equipment, and construction. The second phase will include final equipment procurement, installation, and startup of the facilities. The Water Services Department plans to return to council during the third quarter of FY ' '23 for award of GMP-2, which we call Phase Two. That concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions?
No, Mayor, I just wanted to make sure that our residents were aware that our water services team is actively looking for water resources for our city, and these two new wells will be adding to our portfolio of groundwater in Glendale. I think it's an important thing for residents to know. Thank you.
Okay, and the other item?
Okay, sir, item number 12. This is the construction agreement before council this evening is with MGC Constructors, Inc. It's for construction services, GMP-1, for a well located in the vicinity of the Abrazo Arrowhead Hospital and a well located on the Sierra Verde Park site, for a total compensation of $8,158,027.45 over the entire term of the agreement. This project will improve the city's water supply redundancy and resiliency from the northern part of the city to the southern part of the city in the event of any interruptions of service at the water treatment plants. The wells will be completed in two phases. You've heard this before, but I'll go through it again. Will be completed in two phases. First phase, GMP-1, will include the pre-construction services, the drilling of both wells, early procurement of long lead items, and site construction. For second phase, the water services will return to council in the third quarter of '23 for award of another contract to include final equipment procurement, installation, and startup of the facilities. The Sierra Verde Park Site will be completed in January of '24, and the Abrazo Arrowhead Hospital Site will be completed in June of '24. That concludes my presentation.
Question?
Nope.
Statement? No?
Ditto. Same as the same.
Very good. Can I have a motion to approve consent agenda items three through 20?
Yes, Mayor, I move we pass and adopt consent agenda items three through 20.
Second. Second. Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Clark, second by the Vice Mayor, to approve the consent items three through 20. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's your ayes, have it, do have it, that motion carries. Moving to item number -- no, we're not moving to item number 12, we're moving to item number Ms. Burr, would you read consent resolutions, item 21 through 26?
Item 21, Resolution Number R-22-49, a resolution the council and the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an educational services agreement with the Maricopa County Community College District on behalf of Glendale Community College Public Safety Sciences for Glendale Police Officer Recruits to participate in the Law Enforcement Training Academy. Item 22, Resolution Number R-22-50, a resolution the council and the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of a sub-grant award agreement, number 2022-044, with the Arizona Department of Public Safety, and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the Victims of Crime Act Anti-Terrorism and Emergency Assistance Program for Crime Victim Compensation and/or Assistance Grant Award in the approximate amount of $58,750 for the Glendale Police Department.
Okay, will you hold right there? Okay, I have a blue card from, I believe it's our Glendale PD. Did you need to speak on either one of these items?
No, sir, I wanted to speak at the end, and I wanted to offer thanks.
Okay, all right, because I didn't know exactly what you were trying to do here. Just said, "Thank you," so.
Just wanted to say thank you to the folks at the end.
Perfect, okay, go ahead.
Item 23, Resolution Number R-22-51, a resolution the council and the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the city manager to utilize a form license agreement as needed to facilitate the temporary use of city property. Item 24, Resolution Number R-22-52, a resolution the council and the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Wilcox for the use of the tax application for access and the ability to interact with the statewide tax data provided by the Department of Revenue. Item 25, Resolution Number R-22-53, a resolution the council and the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of an airport development reimbursable grant agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation, Multi-Modal Planning Division Grant Number E-2S5N, and the acceptance and expenditure of grant funds in the amount of $1,863,000 for apron rehabilitation at the Glendale Municipal Airport. Item 26, Resolution Number R-22-54, a resolution the council and the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the Maricopa Association of Government Agreement Number 1137A-OE Task Order 08 for the installation of sidewalks and enhancement of bicycle facilities on Litchfield Road between Missouri and Northern Avenues. That concludes the consent resolutions.
All right, do you have any speaker cards on any of those items?
No, sir.
Perfect, okay. Can I get a motion to approve items 21 through 26 on consent resolutions agenda?
Mayor?
Go ahead, sir.
I move that we approve items 21 through 26 on the consent resolution agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, second from Councilmember Hughes, to approve items 21 through 26 on consent resolutions agenda. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's your ayes, have it, do have it, that motion carries. Moving on to bids and contracts, Ms. Burr, would you introduce item 27 for us, please?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Synthast Corporation, Number Two, for the purchase of goods and services. No speaker cards.
No speaker cards. Any presentation necessary? Councilmembers, any questions? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item 27?
Yes, Mayor.
Sorry, yes, Mayor, I move the approval of item 27.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hughes, second from Councilmember Tomachoff. To approve recommended action, is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Yes, Mayor, I will explain my vote.
Go ahead.
As is my habit and practice, I do not support nor believe in five-year contracts for ordinary goods and services, so I will be voting no on this item and the following two items. And with that, I vote nay.
Thank you. Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion does carry. Ms. Burr, would you introduce item 28, please?
Award of Request for Proposal 22-20 and Authorization to Enter Into an Agreement with MJBSFT LLC for Operations Analytic and Reporting System. No speaker cards.
No speaker cards. Any questions from the council? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item 28?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item number 28.
Second.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor, second from Councilmember Hugh, to approve the recommended action, is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion also carries. Ms. Burr, item 29, please.
Authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with West Yoast Associates, Inc., for SCADA master plan services. No speaker cards.
Questions from the council? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item 29?
Yes, Mayor, I move we approve the professional services agreement with Yoast Associates, Inc.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second from Councilmember Hugh, to approve recommended action. Do we have any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion also carries. Ms. Burr, would you introduce item 30?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Andrews Refrigeration, Inc., for HVAC service and repair. No speaker cards.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item 30?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move we authorize the city manager to enter into the described linking agreement with Andrews Refrigeration, Inc.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, second from the Vice Mayor, to approve the recommended action. Do we have any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries unanimous. Item 31, please, Ms. Burr.
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Bird and Bug Ventures, LLC, doing businesses Anderson Lock &amp; Safe for locksmith services and ratification of expenditures. No speaker cards.
Okay, perfect. I love the name. Councilmembers, any questions? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item 31?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve item number 31 on the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, second from Councilmember Clark, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on Birds and Bugs? I love that name. Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries also unanimous. Moving on to ordinances, Ms. Burr, would you introduce item 32, Ordinance 022-37?
Ordinance Number O-22-37, an ordinance of the council and the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending Glendale Code, Chapter 2, Article 8, Division 6, Section 2-316 regarding the composition of the Citizens Transportation Oversight Commission and establishing an effective date. Mayor and council, the proposed ordinance would reduce the Citizens Transportation Oversight Commission membership from 11 to 7 members, and the proposal is to eliminate the four at-large positions and retain the seven mayoral district appointments. The Government Services Committee is in support of the recommendation.
Perfect. Councilmembers, any questions? Hearing none, can I get a motion on item 32, Ordinance 022-37?
Yes, Mayor, I move we approve item 32, Ordinance 22-37.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Hughes, second from Councilmember Tomachoff, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, old woman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion also carries. Ms. Burr, would you introduce item 33?
Ordinance Number O-22-38, an ordinance of the council and the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the execution of easements and deeds at various locations throughout the city and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Mayor, members of the council here to provide staff report this evening is Glendale Principal Engineer Jamie Jabin.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, mayor and council members. This is a request to accept deeds and easements at six locations throughout the city. By accepting the deeds and easements, the city will be able to access and maintain these facilities, and for this reason, staff is recommending approval. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none, can I get a motion on item 33, Ordinance 022-38?
Yes, Mayor, I move we pass and adopt ordinance Number 022-38.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, a second from Councilmember Turner. We did not have any speaker cards, is that correct?
No, sir.
Okay, with that said, do we have any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries unanimous. Ms. Burr, would you introduce item 34, Ordinance 022-39?
Ordinance Number O-22-39, an ordinance of the council and the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the abandonment of easements at various locations throughout the city and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Mayor and council, at two locations, we have waterline facilities being abandoned in conjunction with redevelopment of the properties. With this action, we will be approving the abandonment of the associated easements. Staff is recommending approval since the city will no longer need access to the removed facilities. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none, can I get a motion on item 34, Ordinance 022-39?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move we adopt ordinance O-22-39, and waive reading beyond the title.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Turner, second from Councilmember Clark, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, start with Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion also carries unanimous. Ms. Burr, would you introduce item 35, 022-40?
Ordinance Number O-22-40, an ordinance of the mayor and council and the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the Glendale City Code, Chapter 28, Article 3, Community Development Advisory Committee, and declaring an emergency.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report is Jean Marino, our Director of Community Services.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, mayor and council. This ordinance presented before you tonight has the effect of reducing the size of our Community Development Advisory Committee from 12 members to nine members, also allowing us the use of subcommittees for very specific purposes, and then declaring an emergency to make this ordinance effective immediately so that we can conduct our June meeting. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, can I get a motion on item 35, Ordinance 022-40?
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance Number O-22-40.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second from Councilmember Turner, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
I'm going to explain my vote. It is not an emergency in the sense of we need to call 911. It's an emergency that we can't hold a meeting unless we have the numbers, so I don't want anybody to be alarmed. It's just a way that we can conduct business, and it's the legal way that we have to have a definition. So with that, I do vote aye. The motion carries unanimous. We'll now conduct a public hearing on item 36. Ms. Burr, would you introduce item 36, Resolution R-22-55?
Resolution number R22-55, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, adopting the final budget of the amounts required for the public expense for the city of Glendale for the fiscal year 2022, 2023, setting forth the revenue and the amount to be raised by direct property taxation, and adopting the city council's financial policies.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open on item 36, Resolution R22-55. Ms. Camacho.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This resolution is to review the proposed fiscal year 2023 final budget, conduct a public hearing on the final budget, and convene a special meeting to adopt the resolution formally approving the final operating capital debt service and contingency appropriation budget. The total budget for fiscal year 2023 is 1.07 billion. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Hearing none. Speaker cards?
No, sir.
Anyone that'd like to speak on this item? Public hearing is now closed. Special budget meeting will now recess our budget regular voting meeting and move to a special budget meeting. Let me read that again so I don't confuse anybody. We will now recess our regular voting meeting and move to a special budget meeting to vote our final adoption of the annual budget for fiscal year 2223. Special budget meeting is called to order. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 36, Resolution R22-55?
Resolution number R22-55, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, adopting the final budget of the amounts required for the public expense for the city of Glendale for the fiscal year 2022, 2023, setting forth the revenue and the amount to be raised by direct property taxation, and adopting the city council's financial policies.
We have anyone else needing to speak on this? Nope. Can I get a motion on item 36, Resolution R22-55?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item number 36, Resolution number R22-55. Second.
I have a motion from the vice mayor, a second from councilmember Clark. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
I'm going to explain my vote. Correct me if I'm wrong, city manager, but I think this is the first time in Glendale's history that we have a budget over a billion dollars.
No.
I don't think we did that last year, did we?
I think we did last year.
We did last year. Okay.
We're on a roll.
Second year, which is pretty amazing when you think about it. Secondly, we're able to do this budget with no property tax increase. And so I hope our citizens all understand that we're able to conduct business and not have to raise property taxes. I believe this is six or seven years straight.
Six.
Six years.
Six years in a row. So again, if we can keep doing that and not have to raise our taxes, it'd be awesome. So with that, I do vote aye. It makes it unanimous. There's no objection from this council. This special budget meeting is adjourned. We're now reconvened for a regular voting meeting. And that brings us back into council comments and suggestions. Councilmember Clark.
Yes, I'm going to follow up. Everyone saw us go through a procedure where we had a regular voting meeting. We had to go into a special meeting for the budget. Well, last week, the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, its Budget and Finance Committee on which I serve, the city of Goodyear offered a resolution that was passed unanimously by the committee to do away with the special meeting. They said it was redundant, which it is. So it will be considered by the full league policy committee, and perhaps by next year, we'll only have one meeting instead of two, not a special meeting anymore. Secondly, I would just remind everyone in the Yucca District that you have two weeks left to file an application for grant funding for a special beautification project in your neighborhood. We've received several applications, but we'd like to see some more. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hugh?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember Melner?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to do some follow up on, over the last several months, we've had citizens who have come into the Glendale City Council, and they're from the Granada Estates neighborhood, and they specifically have asked us to enforce code in Granada Estates. And so the city staff has taken action on this. Granada Estates is a neighborhood that is roughly between 67th and 72nd Avenue, between Greenway and Paradise Lane in the Suaro District. So typically, there's about 50 or 70 open cases in Granada Estates at any given in time. And upon the requests from residents back in 2019, the staff temporarily reassigned additional resources to Granada Estates and launched a proactive initiative to address compliance issues back then. That was like three years ago. And they did perform a comprehensive sweep. They included going street by street, addressing violations, educating residents. Approximately 70% of the properties in the neighborhood had an open case. The nine-month effort resulted in 646 cases, designating more than 80 properties as repeat offenders, and issuing about 40 citations. And in response to what has been recently requested by citizens from the same neighborhood in this council, code compliance has again diverted resources to educate residents and address blighting conditions in Granada Estates. Beginning Tuesday, May 31st, 2022, two senior inspectors were temporarily assigned to the area in addition to the regularly assigned grid inspector. They are repeating the efforts that we did back in 2019, going street by street, property by property, to address violations and educating residents about the code violations that we have passed and recently adopted changes to. As a result of that effort, thus far, approximately 107 cases have been opened. About 50% of those who receive a notice are complying right away. One civil citation has been issued, and 40 to 50% of the inspected properties have at least one violation. So far, the code inspectors have gone through about 25% of Granada Estates, and they are continuing their effort through the fall, where they'll be able to sweep through the entire communities probably a couple of times. And I bring this to your attention because I wanted to let the citizens know that even though we cannot respond, when we have citizens come up and speak to us at the end of our meeting, we are not allowed by law to respond. We can direct staff to do things, and council has done that. Our city manager has taken it on himself, as well as code department, to take action on the comments that were given, and they have resulted in, I think, going through Granada Estates and trying to educate and improve the situation that's going on there. So I wanted the citizens of Glendale to know that their comments do, that we do hear their comments. It may seem like we don't respond. We don't say anything during the meeting, but we're not allowed to. I just wanted everyone to know that we are moving forward with these issues, and I want to just thank those who have come forward and let us know about them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Melner. Councilmember Tomachoff?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
Not tonight, Mayor.
Vice mayor?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay, and I have only one thing that I'd like to share real quick with everybody. At Westgate, not on July 4th, but the day before, on July 3rd, Sunday evening, from 5:00 to 9:00, they will be one of the very few in the entire valley that will have a fireworks display, and it's a free display. I got that verified today. So if you have a chance, celebrate our nation's birthday. I know that's a while ways away, but again, it's nice to know that we have our business community celebrating the United States' birthday. So with that, next on the agenda are citizens' comments. Council makes the opportunity available to our citizens to bring information and business before the council that's not on our printed agenda. And again, I don't necessarily feel like I should have to read this, but I will. Before I welcome speakers to the podium, I want to remind everyone in the audience and anyone speaking tonight that this is a public meeting. As the chair, I'll not tolerate any profanity or threats to the council or staff. If you violate the rules, you'll be asked to leave. Simple as that. With that said, I'm going to ask Mr. Wilfong to come up first. Joyce Capson, you're up next, so if you'll work your way towards the front so we can expedite the meeting. Mr. Wilfong, you've got three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Wilfong, Acateo District. It's funny because you're talking about education of residents, and I was reading what the workshop agenda was on, what Rick St. John was going to bring, and one of them was, that he came up was, the different lot sizes create a confusion for residents. And I'm thinking to myself, after 29 years, with the consistent lot size staying the same, how is it confusing now? And my wife was looking at the 2022 calendar, and there's a whole lot of information on this. I mean, you can find everything you want, and I got, I landed, started, took it, and I looked at it, and I go, where's the code compliance information? It's on the bottom of August, and it's two paragraphs. That's it. After two and a half years of a new code, they only have two and a half paragraphs on the bottom of August, and it only considers, Glendale City Council in 2021 passed a new regulations, the violations of any park, any violation of parking of any vehicle, trailer, or recreation vehicle in landscape area, in the front yard, and all parking maneuvering areas of a dustproof surface such as concrete and asphalt, it's a violation. The other one they have on there is don't feed pigeons. That's it. That's all they have. So we're talking about front yard parking. And if you have the paperwork I gave you, if you look at it from April 14th, this complaint has been in there since the beginning of the year. And April 14th, if you look at the highlighted areas, each time my inspector rerouted this to the code support administrator. And it goes on, and some of them, it says, waiting for direction from the supervisors on how to enforce front yard parking. This is going on through May 22nd. And it's still going on. So the problem is deeper than just having enforcement. It is deeper in the management part of this. So let me touch a little bit farther on what you don't understand is that if you change the parameters in the code from the higher lots that have 40% parking across, or 40 feet across their driveway and 40% front yard parking to 30 feet to 50%, this picture right here, this is a 40-foot driveway. Under Chapter 24, there is no administrative help. This resident loses 10 feet of his parking area. That code doesn't look at that, and that's the hardship that they're going to create by not looking at the whole code, and I don't think they understand it. So please help us, from Tim Bowling. Please help the residents, from Tim Bowling. Thank you.
Joyce Capson, you're up. And James Dibler, you'll be up right after Joyce.
I really don't want to be here, but I'm here because it's important to be here.
I need you to state your name and the district you live in.
Joyce Capson, Suaro District. Councilmember Melner, thank you for the thing you just, the lecture you gave about Granada Estates. There's still a lot of issues that I don't know you guys are really hearing us. I just got a text the other day from code, I reported vehicles again. Case closed. No enforcement. Thank God there is a backup unit, Glendale PD. Call Glendale PD. Officer William Mesh responds, and he issues two citations. We are sucking the taxpayer dollar here. Call code, they don't enforce. Call PD, they do. This is ridiculous. I mean, I think it is. Maybe nobody agrees with that, but it's a fact. I've got another one. I mean, it's... I turned in a neighbor for having no visible license plate, which would mean in an operable vehicle, because they don't have a registration. Evidently, they don't. They don't have a plate. So I turn it in. It's no visible license plate. And Andrew Fernandez, the code officer, I mean, I died laughing. Closes the case because he can't see the plate. I'm not kidding. This is what we're dealing with in Granada. And it's not right. And I understand that you're coming out there with Bob Erickson as a supervisor. I also understand that I said I was going to audit Granada Estates in every parcel in it. Right now, I'm at 323 public records requests for these properties. I have about 450 more to go. And by the time I'm done, there will be no doubt in the mind of anybody in this city council that Tim Bowling needs to go. It's a crying shame. If you read these public records, they're almost entertaining. They're really not funny because it's my community. And Tim Bowling needs to go. You need to find another code administrator, and that's what I have to say today, and I thank you, and, oh, my bad. I thank the 1,854 Suaro residents that came forward and viewed the last council meeting, and I'm hoping that we can get into all the other districts too and let the city know, hey, we're here. And we are. Thank you again, Councilmember Melner, for stepping up today for Granada. Guys, have a blessed day.
Mr. Dibler, you're up. David Goytia, you're up after Mr. Dibler, if you work your way towards the front.
Hi, my name is James Dibler. I live in Phoenix, Arizona. Today, I am speaking to you regarding employment concerns. Two weeks ago, there was a homeless problem at 43rd Avenue and Beale Avenue near the Target Shopping Center. I was using Glendale One's app on my iPhone about this homeless problem. Four days later, the city of Glendale contacted Central Arizona Shutter Services. Central Arizona Shutter Services took care of this homeless problem and moved them to their facility. I recommend Glendale residents to use the Glendale 360 app because it helped me to solve problems in the community. I recommend for everybody to download the Glendale One app because it'll help a lot to solve problems in the community around the city. Finally, I have a happy day in my life. Yeah. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, James. Don Conseting, you're going to be following this gentleman here, so you'd work your way towards the front.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, sir.
Dave Goytia, I work for the Glendale Police Department. I'm a police officer. Mayor, council, city manager, Phelps, all city leaders, I'm here to say thank you. And I'm going to ask you to hang in there with me a little bit, because there's a way that I'd like to do it. I've been a police officer for 21 years, and my first day on the job was the day before 9/11, September 10th, 2001. And my first assignment was, I was told I'd be guarding a barricade to guard the police department, and I can't tell you how proud I was, you know, to do that. I went on to become a patrol officer, of course. I served in the south side of the city because I had family there. My grandparents had a house at 63rd and Montebello. And I served as a proud patrolman, 2004. Kind of, I was kind of faced with the reality of how dangerous the job was when I witnessed Officer Rico get shot in the chest during a high-risk stop with a stolen vehicle. It was a difficult time, but it reaffirmed my commitment and my pride to be a police officer. A year later, in 2005, I was crushed by a stolen vehicle being driven by a suspect named Richard Lopez. He ran me over with a Honda Civic, crushing my body. My pelvis was completely flattened. I had broken ribs. I'll probably need a hip replacement someday. But I remember on the ride to the hospital telling the ambulance driver that, man, I just want to be a cop still. That's all I wanted to do. They couldn't tell me if I was going to be able to walk again, and I made it back to work in six months. In fact, I came back on Christmas Eve. My wife almost killed me. She was very upset with me, but I made it back on Christmas Eve. 2007, again, as a proud police officer, doing my duties, I conducted a traffic stop on a car full of drug users. One of the occupants opened fire on myself and Officer Tony Holly. Tragically, Officer Holly was killed during that incident. I did my duty. By the grace of God, I survived that incident. I actually ended up being awarded the National Peace Officer Medal of Valor by George Bush. And before I went into the Oval Office, I told the Attorney General, Michael Mukasey, that I didn't deserve it, that I didn't feel like I was the true hero. But although that incident was devastating, I continued my duties. 2018, I witnessed Sergeant Ked Livingston get shot in the chest, and we fought with him for two years as he struggled with complications, but he made it back, and I hung in there. And I'll wrap it up briefly, and I apologize. briefly, and I apologize. I've gone over a little bit. The first time that I really started to question my profession and what I was doing was on May 25 in 2020. Saw our society just fall into chaos and anarchy. And I saw a city close to us be looted. But I will tell you, city leadership and our leadership in the police department made it clear that it wasn't going to happen in Glendale. And I was tasked with overnight surveillance for a week to secure our businesses in Glendale, and I had never been so happy to work a graveyard shift. And I made a commitment that I was not going to let that happen to our businesses in Glendale. But about the fourth night, I was pretty tired. And I found myself questioning, you know, my career for the first time in my life. But I'll tell you something. I got onto my phone, and I saw a news article. And our mayor, Mayor Wires, went to the media, and he said, quote, "Our police will remain fully funded as long as I am the mayor of Glendale." And I read that all members of the city council supported this statement. And I got to tell you, I was re-energized. And that's what I needed. And it was a pick-me-up. And then in July of 2021, our mayor, our council, city manager, Phelps, our police chief, released a video. And I can't tell you how that meant to the men and women of the Glendale Police Department. So I'm just here to say thank you for unwavering support, and I say God bless you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Not all heroes work apes, folks. You're up, ma'am.
See, I still have my...
I see that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Stand closer, and for the record, your name and the district.
My name is Don Concin, and I'm with Suaro District, okay? Mr. Melner, I appreciate the comments that you made as far as, you know, the things that have been happening. All right. However, I seriously think that, I'm not a politician. I said that the last time, you know, and I made it very clear, okay? And I'm not much for politicians. But I seriously believe, okay, that what you're told is not necessarily always what really is, okay? I spent 15 years with the Department of Corrections. I left as the chief of security of a unit of 300 inmates and 143 staff, and I knew everything that went on in that yard, and everything that was said, and everything that was done, okay? There wasn't a time that I had to ask anybody for anything, because I got out from behind my desk, and I started walking the yard, talking to residents, or I should say inmates at that point, okay? Talking to inmates, talking to my officers, you know, because not everybody is perfect, and sometimes your administrative staff, you know, they need a little bit of a wake-up call, okay, as to what their job is and who they're supposed to be, what they're supposed to be doing, all right? And unfortunately, to be quite honest with you all, I think when it comes to the Glendale area, the Suaro area, whatever area you're in, okay, it's important for administrators to get their ass out of their office and start taking a ride around and see if the staff are really doing what they're supposed to do. Because a lot of the codes that you guys send somebody out to do, they come back as, nothing found, all right? And I can tell you, I can take you, Mr. Melner, I can take you, Mr. Wires, and I can take anybody who wants to come and take you for a ride, and you will see exactly what your citizens, your citizens are looking for. I said this last week, and I'm going to say it again, okay? We don't work for you. You work for us, all right? And it's important that you get your ass out of your office. Excuse my French, I didn't mean that. But it's important that you get out of your office and start walking your areas. Start talking to your citizens, because your citizens are the ones that you're here to represent. You're not here just to decide to make, you know, all this stuff, you know, and all those conversations. You have a responsibility to the citizens of your area, all right? You know, I don't care what you do, but I do care about the citizens that I live with, and I do care about the citizens in those areas, you know? When I have, when there's a citizen, we call them the balloon house. Don't even say it, Mr. Wires.
I'm going to say you need to wrap it up.
I know. The balloon house, okay? And it comes back unfounded, and across the street, directly across the street, okay, there's a house there. You're going to flip, okay? With one of those hot tubs sitting on the lawn.
I do need you to wrap it up, please.
All right. So please get out of your office. Please start looking around. Please looking for yourself. You know, there's more to being a supervisor and a person in charge than sitting in an office behind a desk.
Thank you. Hey, there being no further business tonight before this council, I'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight's meeting. If there's no objection from this council, hearing none, adjourned.